And I don't know whether council members would like to speak now or would like to speak during the public hearing or after the public hearing. Up to you. What's your preference?
We defer to you.
You defer to us. Do you have a preference?
Well, in that case, I mean, would you rather hear the discussion, council members first and then speak on it? I thought that might be the case.
Okay. Okay. Well, then we will move on to the items to be considered. Thank you, Greg.
Great. Good evening. Greg Claxton with Metro Planning Department. I'm here to present the FY 2017 to FY 2022/23 Capital Improvements Budget. As background, as you all know, the Charter requires the Planning Commission recommend a prioritized list of capital improvements to the mayor and Metro Council each year. Over the last couple of years, we've been working to overhaul our process, and tonight's capital improvement budget represents a step further in that, although we still have a few little ways to go. Capital improvements are any building, structure, work, or improvement with an average life of 10 years or more, and a cost greater than $50,000. So just to sort of think through the range of things that includes, obviously, things like fire stations, public buildings, those sorts of things, streets, sewers, but also mobile pieces of equipment like the fire engine itself, as well as some of the facilities that people don't see every day, like a fire training facility. It also includes things that are really internal, such as ITS equipment, servers, communications equipment, that sort of thing. So it's a pretty broad category. As such, we, one of the things that we've been working on to present to you with your kind of recommended levels is some recognition of what projects fall within the purview of the Planning Commission and what projects don't seem to have much guidance from the general plan. I'll get to that when we talk about the different recommendations. The capital improvements budget works as primarily sort of a planning tool. Any capital improvement that Metro makes must be included in the CIB. However, inclusion in the CIB does not guarantee funding, so the CIB really only lays out what Metro could spend money on, and it really only has teeth in year one. It has six years of projects, but it's only binding on the first year because it's adopted every year. So as year two becomes year one, you adopt a new. Projects get funded through a variety of mechanisms that require an act of counsel, either currently or in the past. The biggest source of funding, particularly on projects that, you know, the general public pays attention to, is general obligation bonds, which is enacted through a bond authorization ordinance, which usually incorporates in some way a capital spending plan that lays out what projects would be funded. In addition, there are revenue bonds that Metro Water uses or the Sports Authority, 4% funds that are usually for smaller internal equipment or office reorganizations, enterprise funds in operating budget occasionally, and then federal and state funding, usually tied to some other source. A couple of updates from what we've been working on this year. One, we've met with every individual council member one-on-one to give them a briefing on what we've been doing with the CIB process and, you know, assessment. We've also taken their project requests throughout this year, which has sort of rearranged the traditional schedule a little bit. You'll see some of the ramifications from that as we've, you know, incorporated some amendments at the CIB. We're working, that's kind of an evolving process, we're working to kind of improve how that happens over the next year with council and other departments. In addition, the Finance Department upgraded their budgeting software. This was kind of a big opportunity for us because we were able to actually work with them to add new fields for their departments to fill out as they submit their requests. In particular, we requested that departments provided a project need for every request, as well as identify a range of what we call efficient government factors. This has been enormously helpful for us, but is with any big change, you know, that's been a little bit rocky. Last, this year for the first time, we're introducing tiered levels of Planning Commission recommendations for projects, and that's the bulk of the second half of my presentation. The other big thing that's been going on for the past year and a half or so are a slew of updated master plans with major capital implications, from transit, bikes and pedestrians, the parks master plan, library master plan, public art, and the Metro Action Commission all had major planned updates this year. Some of those were kind of big, large, expansive public involvement plans, but, for example, the Metro Action Commission was very facilities-focused, just kind of looking broadly across all of their facilities, what their needs were, what needs to be upgraded. And, you know, we try to work with all of the departments, no matter where they're at, what kind of plan they have, to incorporate their recommendations into the CIB and make sure that they're lining up with Nashville Next. For this year's capital improvements budget, I'm going to walk through kind of how it's structured and organized and provide a summary. A couple of things to get started. First, the document itself is organized into four sections. There's an introduction. The first section, though, is really projects funded by the Urban Services District, and this is just an inventory. The second section is projects funded by the General Services District. Those two are required by the Charter. However, to organize them a little more clearly, we put most of the project details into the third section. In addition to the CIB itself, we have a couple of different supporting materials. First is an online CIB project viewer, so that people don't have to turn to the 350-page document to find out what's going on around them. They can go to the online map, zoom into their part of town or wherever they're interested in, and see what the requests are around them. Second is we compiled livability projects, and here we were referring to things like transportation, parks, libraries, into council-by-council summaries, or council district-by-district summaries, to help kind of council members review and their constituents review what's planned in their areas. This year's six-year CIB includes $8 billion in project requests across 539 projects. As in the past, we've kind of highlighted the first year. That's, as I mentioned earlier, sort of what the scope of things that could be funded this year. It also represents, as we've highlighted before, a big gap between kind of projects stacking up in the first year and our six years of spending. And I wanted to highlight this a little bit to talk about some of what goes into that gap. In some cases, it is sort of unprogrammed requests, where a department has multiple requests and they haven't phased it out across multiple years. One of our goals ongoing is to help departments, you know, program a little more realistically to spread their spending out. Second, there may be some flexibility needed for opportunities that come up. So, for example, if a department is working with an outside agency and they're waiting for that agency to proceed, they tend to want to maintain the project in year one so that they're ready to go when T.DOT or the Army Corps of Engineers or whomever begins work. And then last, there's some projects that look a little bit like unprogrammed requests, but they're intentionally done, you know, kind of laying out several opportunities in year one, in part to defer to the mayor and to council to help sort of figure out where to start. Every project comes with a proposed funding method, and so we've laid out here kind of the sources of those. As you can see, proposed GO bonds are the highest amount. Most projects are in that category. Second, though, are the proposed revenue bonds. I think those are primarily water services, federal funds, proposed 4% funds, and so To try to organize the details of the document a little bit, we've grouped departments into these categories. The first three are just standalone departments that have such extensive capital programs they really rate on their own. It's Public Works, Schools, and Water and Sewer. And then after that, we have Transit Development and Culture, which includes MTA, obviously, but also parks, libraries, those sorts of departments. Facilities and Technology, which are a little bit more interior-facing, such as the Assessor has project upgrades, General Services, their fleet request, those kind of things, as well as General Hospital. And then last is the Safety Agencies. Their requests are shown separately as well. I want to talk through a little bit how we've structured some of the parts of the CIB because we've made it as compact as possible. So this is an example of a project detail. At the top, we've got kind of the core project information, an ID number, that 18FD001, a status, this is a new request versus something that's resubmitted, in progress or not started yet, the project type, this is a capital asset, other things are asset protection, maintenance, or a study, capital priority group, which is something that Finance uses to organize projects, the title and description that tells you what the project is, and then last, if another department implements the project, who that is. We realized, as we've been briefing people over the past few weeks, that something that we had taken as so natural, that project ID is actually a little bit opaque, so we wanted to break that apart a little bit. It's actually three different codes combined. 18 is the last two digits, the first two numbers, in this case 18, are the last two digits of the year the project was added to the CIB. So you'll see a lot of 18, 17, 16s, but the occasional 03, 99, 85, 72. Then there's a two-digit letter department code, and in some cases, those are still projects that are sort of slowly working their way out. There's a two-letter department code, FD for Fire Department, WS for Water Services, PW for Public Works. And then the last four numbers are just the order of entry in the year that they were added. Sometimes that's priority, sometimes that's just however they were added. In the middle, we have a set of a block of priority information. This includes the recommended Planning Commission priority, as well as off to the right, if there's any specific recommendation language to give guidance, whether there's a conflict or just some guidance for the future. Second is a department priority, and sometimes this is a code, 1004, neither the funds are available. Sometimes it's a rank order, 1 to 20 or 1 to 5. And then last is a council priority. This is where we identify the council district that it's located in, but we can also show if it's a particular request or a priority of a council member. This is something that we've kind of been collecting through these council member meetings, just sort of as they've told us, this is a request or this is one of my priorities. It's not really standardized yet, but we thought it was useful information to start conveying. Then the funding information, the project cost total and by year, as well as the funding method, the tax district that would fund it, and then any impact to operating budget. And then last, we've got assessment information. This is where we're starting to connect project requests to Nashville Next. This year, we're still doing this in a very general way, but we wanted to start making those connections in the document. So we've got those efficient government criteria, where there's some explanation for why, why the project sort of ranks in terms of, you know, the efficiency of money, whether, you know, the level of need that it's responding to, the condition, some sort of regional collaboration or planning context. There's the guiding principles that are supported in the upper right. I'll come back to those in a moment. And then there's a map and some sense of how that's connecting to the growth and preservation concept map. We're looking for, is it supporting a center? Is it supporting access to the green network? Is it kind of sized to be, to support existing conditions? And then, you know, if it's guided by a plan, but we don't have a final location, we try to reflect that as well. These are the guiding principles from Nashville Next, the seven kind of very broad overarching things that the general plan is trying to help us achieve. B Nashville, foster strong neighborhoods, expand accessibility, create economic prosperity, champion the environment, advance education, and ensure opportunity for all. And we've generally tried, without getting into kind of too many details, just show where projects support one of these. Something new that we've introduced this year is collecting similar projects together to organize them a little bit more efficiently and make them easier to find. This is an example from schools, where we've kind of organized their school expansion requests all into one place, their renovations into one place, and then district-wide projects into one place, so that there's some sort of sorting there, given the volume of requests that they have. And so the way that this works is the funding box for this program is across the middle. In FY 2018, there's $126 million in requests, but then year by, or project by project is listed out below. And in this case, it goes on for, I mean, there's, I think, three or four pages of projects that go along with this. And then as well, a project map that highlights what are the requests for FY 18 and then what are the requests for beyond that. We've also provided a summary for each department. So in this case, the library, we show the number of projects by status and sort of the type, whether it's a standalone, a program, or a sub-project, total funding requests by funding source, and then a quick rundown, project by project below that, that shows the department priority as well as the Planning Commission recommended priority. So I mentioned at the start that this year, we're stepping into a little bit more of refined recommendations to the mayor and to council. We have six tiers that we organize projects into, for your consideration. The first is recommend as planned. This is essentially identifying projects that align with Nashville Next and are recommended for funding in the year that they request. The second is recommend as planned if funding is available. These are projects that are maybe a little bit lower priority, but that align with Nashville Next, and, you know, sort of depending on the funding availability, you know, they represent reasonable projects to proceed. The third is recommend further work. This would be if we wanted to recommend rescheduling a project or, you know, working to align it with another project, or just it needs further work before it should be funded, we would use this. Then we have non-general plan projects. This is how we're handling those categories of projects that don't connect to sort of the Planning Commission's core mission, things like ITS projects, General Hospital, just pure internal office reorganizations, that sort of thing. And we pull these out separately because we don't want us scoring them against essentially a land use plan to reflect poorly on them, when really the issue is just we don't have guidance to give. In some cases, we may say not enough information to score. And then last, we may, we identify some projects as not conforming with the general plan. And here, the recommendation is, we would recommend against funding until the plan, until the project and the general plan align. You could do that through changing the project, the plan, or both, and we have examples of both of those. This year, kind of the state of where we are, we're not using C, recommend further work, or N, not enough information to score. We don't think we're quite, you know, have the prioritization system quite robust enough yet. Our goal for next year is certainly to expand the use of all of these. I'm going to walk through what goes into the categories that we are using this year and some of what those projects are. Most of the projects that we've recommended as A, recommend as planned, primarily reflect some decision that's already been made. So, for example, Metro Water is working from revenue bonds that were previously approved. They already have their, you know, sort of their source of funding. There's no further action that's needed, so we would recommend sort of continuing that program. Similarly, the Arts Commission works from the 1% for Art Program, which appropriates a 1% of a certain set of capital projects for public art. This is one where the money's already been appropriated, it just needs to be programmed through the CIB, and so we would recommend that. Similarly, we recommend projects that are in progress that need additional funding. These are kind of the primary ones here are some general services projects for public safety projects from last year that they need to continue, and then the farmer's market. And then we have projects that support an approved operating budget request previously that, you know, they need essentially office space. If these weren't tied to a previously approved request, we would, these would be kind of D categories, non-general plan projects. However, there are a small number of projects this year that we wanted to highlight for substantive reasons, partly to get into the practice of using this A level of recommendation to make substantive recommendations to the mayor and to council. And I'm going to run through these briefly. First is a replacement clinic for the Woodbine Health Clinic. The clinic is in fairly poor condition. It serves a vulnerable population, and that population, kind of the focus of that, has shifted within the county. So we're recommending a new clinic to replace that. We're recommending the Health Department's request for a new clinic to replace Woodbine. Second, there are three Head Start requests that we're recommending for A as well. One is to add sprinklers to a number of Head Start facilities. Second is a range of major maintenance upgrades based on their plan. And then the third is the first in a series of relocations and building upgrades that they're requesting. In this case, it's to relocate the North Head Start from North Nashville further to the southeast. Again, that's to reflect how their clients have shifted. Last, we're recommending a new emergency communication center. This is one where the facility itself is in, you know, sort of moderate to fair condition. However, relocating it, expanding the facility would improve service, and it's critical to expanding other services. In this case, adding additional police precincts would require either crunching down their current space, their staffing, or kind of an expanded footprint. For the B projects, recommend as planned if funding is available. Most of this year's projects are in this category. It's 411 of 539 projects. I want to note that all of the projects from the major round of plan updates and all the transportation projects are in this category, except for the ones that I'll talk about in a moment. Transit, sidewalks, bikes, parks, you know, these are all kind of in here, partly because all of these plans wound up in a slightly different place, and we want them to sort of all get caught up in terms of programming out six years. Our goal, as I mentioned, is in future years, the number of projects in this category goes down. The non-general plan projects include things like contingency funding, fleet and equipment, IT projects, and retrofitting office space. The projects that we've identified as not conforming to the general plan are listed here. Again, the recommendation would be to not fund these until the project and the plan align, and for each one, we've identified a specific recommendation. So the first is 85PW016A, reconstruct and widen UNE Antioch Pike. Our recommendation is to modify the project to align the Major and Collector Street Plan. The request is to widen to three lanes throughout. We think widening only at specific intersections is more appropriate for this location. That's based on a specific recommendation from the Major and Collector Street Plan, and that's what all of these come down to, is kind of the request versus the MCSP. The next one is 91PW002A. This is a request, it's a, to address the intersection highlighted here, although kind of one of the issues that we found is sometimes the way the request is framed and what the actual project is differ a little bit. This is one where what's been engineered or what's been sort of roughly costed out is to add a new connection from Blue Hole Road across I-24, Mill Creek, and CSX Railroad to Hickory Hollow Parkway. We don't believe that's feasible anymore. It's cost prohibitive, so we're recommending removing this project from the CIB and conduct a study. We've, there's a new project, 18PW013, to determine what an appropriate improvement would be. And here, I want to pause and note that your action, as we're currently set up, does not actually remove the project from the CIB. That's something that would sort of have to take place later. Your recommendation would carry forward with it at each of the future stages until the mayor, council, or next year, Public Works were to remove it. 95PW004, Tulip Grove Road. This is to modify the project to an urban standard, and here, we're contrasting with a rural road. So the, and the guidance here is maintain the Major and Collector Street Plan, which recommends two lanes, but incorporating wider lanes and curb and gutter so that it's a safer route for the traffic that does travel on it. 97PW060, Cloverland Drive. Similar to Tulip Grove, this is recommending modifying the project to build to an urban standard, but also updating the Major and Collector Street Plan to recognize occasional three lanes for turn lanes at intersections. 99PW01, this is one that shows up in a couple places, but this is essentially an extension of Smith Springs Road across property owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's been, it was an idea that was kicked around 20 or 30 years ago. We've determined, we recommend against it. It's kind of been abandoned by Public Works, but essentially because it cuts across Army Corps property, we're recommending that it be removed. 99PW06, this is to widen 28th Avenue North. It's not recommended by the Major and Collector Street Plan and would require removing multiple homes, so we recommend removing the project. Here again, extending Smith Springs Parkway to Smith Springs Road, the same rationale as before. Okay. So looking across all of the recommendations to try to bring a little bit of context, what we've done is charted out by year the spending or requests tied to each of those level of recommendations. This shows projects that have funding sources other than proposed GO bonds. So you'll see the very large dark blue bars at the bottom are primarily water services projects. These are, you know, where they have the revenue bonds already. And then in light blue, the recommend as planned if funding is available, the green above that is the non-general plan projects. Here, I apologize for not having the title on the slide, these are the same thing but for proposed general obligation bonds. And so for context, what we've done is shown the average spending plan from FY 13 to 17, the upper bar at close to $400 million, and then the average spending plan from FY 08 to 2011 during the recession at around $200 million, to provide a little bit of context for the range, the volume of requests that are in the CIB.
I do want you to hang on this just for a second, because I think it helps put this in context. When you, when we look at a lot of these projects and we're saying that they're eligible to be funded, which is at the 1.8 billion, a little over 1.8 billion, for this next fiscal year is what we're suggesting. And then you see the actual amount that we have to spend, or I should say that we have had available to spend over previous years. I think it helps put it in context that, because I get a lot of people who are, you know, they see this, and especially, we're recording this so that other people can watch it and see what's been decided and how to read the document, but I think it's worth taking a moment so that if someone is watching this online later, that they'll understand that those lines are actually what the spending plan may be able to produce to address these items, not the total amount.
Right. All right. I'm now going to walk through some of the recommended amendments. I'm going to start with amendments that were distributed with the staff report, just kind of a high-level summary. First, there's a handful of corrections. These are corrected or additional maps, updated project costs, or in a handful of cases, council districts that were dropped at some point. Second, there are some projects that were intended to be resubmitted from last year's CIB that were missed. Those have been re-added, and again, these were all the details provided with the staff report. Then we have a couple of modifications. 91PW002A, that intersection at Hickory Hollow and Blue Hole Road. The original recommendation was to primarily remove the project. Here, we've added in the reference to the other study to determine appropriate improvements. And then 13PW003, these are a set of improvements, primarily turn lanes on Ewing Lane. We had as a draft a recommendation for, does not conform to the general plan. This was something where there was still a little bit of confusion over what the actual request is versus the conditions, because Ewing Lane at the intersection provided has turn lanes. Essentially, we're shifting this back to B to determine the project need, if that's still something that's needed for the future. There were also a handful of new project requests. These were mostly as a result of clarifying council requests to determine project costs, where they wound up sort of splitting them into multiple projects to sort of provide a finer level of detail. And then there were a handful of council requests that the council members asked that they be removed. In some cases, this was some work between kind of what was ongoing in Public Works' current program versus what needs to be in the CIB, or in some cases, just recognizing that the request wasn't as high a priority. And then last, obviously, with all of the actions that, any amendments that happened tonight, we would update summary figures accordingly. We also have a handful of additional amendments to walk through that we're recommending for tonight. First is 18PW0048, a Culbertson Road straightening project. We've received project estimates for this, as well as a more refined project scope, so we would incorporate that. Second is 18PW0078, Burkett Road, updated the project cost with a very broad estimate and incorporated a recommendation to coordinate with Public Works to refine the project scope and prepare a final cost estimate. Next is a similar project for Barnes Road, where we're kind of refining what the project is. It was originally entered as widening Barnes Road, but discussions with the council member have clarified that it's more about sort of a lack of pull-offs for stop vehicles and police, and that's something that Public Works would need additional time to develop cost estimates for. A cost estimate for paving Edens Creek Road, 18PW0014. 99PW001, one of the maps I showed earlier, as originally mapped, it didn't show the connection all the way to Mount View, so we would incorporate that and then recommend against it. 10PW0049, this is a restored project from prior CIB and updating a project cost on Hamilton Church Road in Oendale. These are for sidewalks. 18PW0119, this was entered in as, the original request was for complete streets around Music City Central. Further discussions, as we've tried to refine this with Public Works, with the council member, has indicated that this isn't really rebuilding these streets so much as it is a series of, thinking through a series of short-term projects such as signalizations and markings to make the area around Music City Central more pedestrian and bike-friendly. 18PW0117, James Robertson Parkway. This is upgrading the streetscape and sidewalks on James Robertson Parkway and specifying the extents. It's from the municipal courthouse to Church Street. 18HD- 18 HD 001 was a request for Bordeaux Health Clinic. We worked with the, took this from the council member and sort of passed it on to the Health Department, who has talked with the council member sort of about what the options are. This is one that probably would not, will not actually be a metro public health clinic. It's probably actually that it's, needs to be some sort of either nonprofit or for-profit health clinic for the kinds of services that the council member is looking for, but essentially, we kind of want to recognize the request and recommend coordinating with Health to determine the level of need and appropriate strategy. 18 PW 0132, that's the study of the Hillary Hickory Hollow Parkway. We have a cost estimate for that. And then last, my chagrin, we have a recommend, an updated recommendation for A-level recommended plan for the Donaldson Library. That's one that was partly funded last year for the land, and they need to continue that for the cost of the structure itself.
Your chagrin, it's not because you don't want a library in Donaldson.
That we missed it. 18 WS 0002 was a request for a stormwater project on Blair and Linden. We're recommending removing this and wrapping it into an updated project map of stormwater projects that we have for '09 WS 0025. It's represented on this map, so we've talked with the council member and sort of worked that out. Last, we have a handful of kind of very minor edits, some projects that are either duplicate, funded, or completed that should be removed, and then a handful of projects to be rescheduled to FY '19 and FY '20. And then a project, 18 PW 0098, this is a complete street project on Belmont from Shackelford to Woodmont. This is one where, this is actually sort of a model that we're looking at in terms of having a study that lays out in a little more detail what the project is, what the engineering requirements are, and what a reasonable cost estimate would be. However, we had a request to extend that from Woodmont to Portland. Our recommendation is not to modify the project now, but to include that as an MPC recommendation to sort of be considered over the next year for next year's CIB. And that would be essentially adding future phases of that project. That would, you know, avoids us, you know, needing to go back to Public Works and recost this, which has had extensive work done to provide an estimate. That is my presentation. Our recommendation is to submit the FY 2017 to '18 capital improvements budget for consideration by the mayor with the amendments presented tonight.
Thank you, Greg. I will say, having been through this a couple times now, it's amazing to see the improvement that the department has made. And, you know, now having this presentation twice, it's starting to sink in all that you've done. And the idea that you've gone through and coded each project with the priorities and Nashville Next objectives, it's very impressive, so, good job. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I guess you are the, we are the applicant.
That was our presentation.
Yes, that was the presentation. So now we'll open it up for anyone wishing to speak in support of the CIB. I thought we'd let you guys speak at the end, but before we close the public hearing, if that works for you. So I'm looking for anyone in support. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Or what? Just provide comments in general? Why don't you just come provide comments in general? In favor or specific items?
If we signed up, are we supposed to?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. My name is Boyd Vogel. I live at 1221 Chikering Road. And what I'm speaking forward to tonight is a roundabout that we're proposing at the intersection of Linwood Boulevard and Harding Place. This particular intersection is very much of a skewed intersection, and it's so offset, excuse me, it's so offset that there's also a fifth stop sign that, for a couple, for two left turn from where they work. There are, what this has become, Harding Place has become a shortcut or a cut-through from Bellevue to Green Hills, and they come down Harding Place from Harding Road all the way to either Estes or to Hillsborough Road in points east. And in the afternoon, it's the reverse. There are 11,000 cars a day that go through this intersection. And because of this, there's a long line of traffic in the morning that backs up almost to Bellview Boulevard from this intersection, and in the afternoon, almost up to Estes, coming west, going back toward Bellevue. So it seems that the best thing to do would be to make it so that the cars can continue moving, except, instead of having to stop constantly and not sure where, who goes next because of the offset. So we've got a roundabout worked out so that it does work, and Public Works has said that it does work, and they had agreed to build it if we could get it funded. So my appeal to you is that this would be something that the neighbors want. I think it's going to benefit everyone. I certainly had, wasn't sure about a roundabout until I saw the one on Murphy Road at McCabe's, near McCabe's Pub, and it works. And since I found out that it would work, then I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to provide any comments?
I did sign.
Yes. You're.
Good evening. I'm Bill Paul. I'm director of the Metro Public Health Department, and I want to thank the planning department and for the recommendation for a replacement for the Woodbine Clinic. Our customers are coming to an 87-year-old school building. Our staff is working there. It's actually our busiest site, and so we're looking forward to the possibility and to your consideration of a new and more appropriate place to serve our customers. Main services that we provide, WIC, nutrition for families, immunizations, keep our kids safe, family planning. And we're proud of what we do, but we'd love to have a more respectful place for our customers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? If not, then I will go ahead and open it up to the council members and let you guys decide. Fight it out.
Well, thank you all. I really want to just thank Greg. It's a lot of work. And this is a work in progress, and to remember how to keep improving this process, because the city needs it. And we refer to her as Chairman Allen here. And again, I think if you look into the charter, having a council member in this group helps provide coordination with what we need. But also, the charter, I think, had invented this process because of the need for you to be an independent referee, particularly on Public Works, Warder and Parks, on the built space. And you see the need for the independent referee, because clearly we have a problem. We've got a billion six in category A projects. We have a natural spending level, much more like 200 million than 400 million. Our, a lot of our surplus debt capacity has been used up in the last years. So this really requires, I think, this group in the years to come to prioritize, to rank, to apply cost benefits as an independent referee to the capital requests in the county with aspects to safety, the needs of the population. I think MMPS has its own capital process, which I welcome you all to tackle, but we really need you to tackle these other high-cost areas and to apply some sort of methodology that's going to be helpful to the council, as that billion six list has to come down to a much lower number. Being respectful that for any of these things, and here's your value, it has to be appropriately costed, and it has to be discreet, workable projects. It's very easy to say, well, we'd like to spend, you know, capital spending is lumpy, and so you have to allocate the lumps fairly and appropriately so that it works. And it's a huge job, and I suspect this will be going on for the next several years, but I think it's fantastic that Metro is beginning to tackle this in a more scientific process than perhaps we've had in the past. So again, thank you to Greg and the staff going forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just wanted to remind everyone that we are going to be having groundbreaking later on this fall for one of the first truly newly designed phases of Envision KC in District Six. And I know a significant amount of capital improvements budget requests for District Six are in that vicinity. And just wanted to state for those who are watching, and particularly some of my constituents who do have a lot of requests for things, that just the need is so great there that if we're going to turn that into a new community, we need to make sure that the infrastructure is right. We are looking at bringing a much higher level of density to that area. So obviously, waters, sewer, sidewalks, you know, we're designing those very well, but it's really important to fund those and get those prioritized as we're doing this massive change to that area, so that the infrastructure is there to support that density. Frankly, it will help connectivity to the rest of the community. And most importantly to me, the more dollars publicly that we ask for that go to those infrastructure needs for KC, the quicker we can build actual housing. So that is part of why that it shifted the way it is. But just appreciate everyone's consideration of that. We have any number of little, of pet projects, sidewalks, and things like that, but I really need to prioritize the needs of that particular community. So appreciate your work and the work of staff.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make a comment before we close the public?
Hello. I'm Director Michelle Donigan with the Emergency Communications Center. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you very much for considering our new building, our new facility, and the priority we have of an A is very exciting. Our facility, current facility we're in, was built in the early 80s. It was very appropriate for that time with the call volume of our city at that time and the way it was laid out for us to take calls. In 2017, the building, we have just absolutely outgrown the building with the growth of our city and the growth of the call volume that's happened, and the fact that we're consolidated now and we dispatch for fire, medical, and police, the building and the layout truly just does not work for us. We're actually on two different levels. We have call-taking on one level and dispatch on one level, and that isn't the best scenario and setup for us to ensure that we're able to provide the best service. So I just wanted to say thank you to the commission for considering us and understanding our need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and the director would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, I want to thank staff, and Greg, and Carrie, and Alham, and George, who have all worked very hard on getting the CIB together. I think, as has been stated now a couple of times, this is vastly different than what the commission has been presented in recent years. We actually had the opportunity to clean out the library here recently, and we found out that, no, when Metro first started, this is actually much closer to what, the way that they did the analysis of the capital improvements budget. Not with this level of detail, not with the data that we're able to put together and the coordination between the projects and our long-range plans, as clearly as it's been presented here, but with that same idea behind being very transparent about how we're prioritizing our capital improvements and finding ways, which I think is another big key to this process, and that is finding ways to bring projects together. So that when we see a water services project that wants to, that is a priority for the Water Services Department at an intersection, and we see that there's also a priority for a Public Works project in that same intersection, I think it's the responsibility of the planning department to marry those and find the efficiencies in doing those projects at the same time. And I think that in the years to come, you will see more of those. You'll see us identifying more of those opportunities. And I agree with Councilman Cooper, narrowing the list, grading the list in a much more numerical way than what you're seeing today, which will cause a lot of consternation, I am sure, between the commission, the council, and the administration. But I think that it is the right way to go if we're going to continue to build a great city and be good stewards of the resources that the public has given us, that we need that level of transparency and we need that level of data sharing. And again, it's now been pointed out a couple of times that staff's done just a fabulous job of presenting it in an easily digestible way. One of the things that I often see is that we have all these data sets that we can share with the public, but if you don't present them in a way that the public, the council, and the administration can digest and see the connections, then you really haven't served much of a purpose other than sharing a spreadsheet with somebody. And so I think that this is a big step towards that, and I hope that next year, we'll be able to take just as large a step. So that's it. Again, a big thank you to staff.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with our Chairman Allen, is that what I heard that we call you? And if I can, just ask you, as you're making your comments, to answer one question?
Sure.
And that is, how you think council will use this information in your debates as this plan comes to you?
That is an excellent question. And I will say, as a council member, I kept trying to look at it in a big way, and I kept discovering that I was digging down into my council district to make sure all my sidewalks were there. And so I think that each council member will check very carefully to make sure that all the projects that they have talked about have made it into this, because that's one thing they need to see. And we do tend to have different areas that we know well. I think there will be some people who will be looking very specifically at school budgets, some people will look very specifically at hospital budgets, some people will look very specifically at parks and things like that. And between us all, I think we'll have a good picture of, you know, what makes sense to us, you know, to be the most important things. You know, somehow, it's got to end up informing what the capital spending plan looks like. And I don't know, Doug, if your goal is to ultimately have year one of the capital improvement budget match the capital spending plan, or sort of be a funnel down to it, or how that works?
No. I think that, I don't know that you can achieve that. There has to be a level of flexibility in being able to take opportunities as they come, and oftentimes even matching up with grants and when those grants actually come through. I think the capital improvements budget will always be significantly larger than the spending plan, but I think it's disproportionately large right now because it includes so many projects that we haven't, we don't feel comfortable, as Greg, I think, mentioned at the beginning of this, we're not comfortable enough with the way that we're able to grade them and then look at that grading system and see, are we meeting the priorities of the community and as expressed through the council and the administration? That's a big piece of what we're trying to do. And so how this capital spending plan spins out will help to inform, how close are we in matching those up? It's a piece of that. But no, I don't think it'll ever, the capital improvements budget will never match up spot-on with the capital spending plan.
And that's appropriate. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I have a couple of questions. The first one would be, how does the sum of all the A projects compare with that 400 million that we were, we've been spending over the last couple of years?
Just for proposed geo-bond, it's the, in the 2017 to '18, the dark blue at the very bottom.
And so the A, all the projects that you had under A recommendation?
All of the A projects that are requesting geo-bond funding.
Gotcha.
That's them.
Fit in there. So we've got, we've got some room to add other things in on top of that. That just, that just says, these are things we know we have to do, and then we can add to that the other things.
And we wanted to start, did that very intentionally, to start very, very conservatively.
Okay, that's very helpful to know, so we've, then we can prioritize the other things to get those into there. Second question is, how does either the $400 million annual spending or the 200, how does that relate to when we issue geo-bonds or how our commercial paper gets used?
So that sort of debt level analysis, we haven't, haven't gone that step to take a look at that. This is looking just at... at that. This is looking just at kind of the, kind of the big bulky, publicly available, obvious pieces that feed into that, which is the spending plan.
So is that a question for Talia, I should ask, I guess?
That's right. And one other thing that I wanted to point out that we're not really, we're not doing as much this year, but we plan on doing in the future, is that oftentimes we look at our capital spending plan and our, and capital improvements budget, and we don't, and we talk about these projects, but then we don't have the discussion about, okay, what is the maintenance cost of those projects over time? So if you're going to build an addition to your house, well, that's all grand, but once you've built the addition, now your air conditioning is more, and your lights are more, and your maintenance is more. And are we thinking through that how the capital improvements that we're doing is affecting our operating budget? And I don't, we really haven't done a thorough job of that in the past, and we hope to add that into the future. So.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, so then, I guess, to go back to the issue of the fact that happily, there is a lot more room above the dark blue for other things. I mean, if we want this CIB to reflect Nashville Next and our top priorities, to me, it makes sense to have the $30 million that's committed to sidewalk as an A recommendation, because that reflects something that we've all said is very important to us. That's just my opinion. I throw that out there. And I would say, I don't know which transit project, but I would say there should be some transit project that's an A, and I would leave that up to MTA to do that. It just, I mean, if we want this to say, this is, you know, this is how we're saying to the world what our priorities are, the fact that all of those are Bs, to me, doesn't prioritize them above anything else. And it feels like we've spent a whole lot of time saying those are really high priorities.
Well, and Greg will do a better job than I'm about to attempt to. But the As are something where we've gotten to a planning stage where we understand the next step to move forward, and we feel that's critical today to move forward. Now, with transit as an example, we don't have a plan to move, we've got in motion, which gives us corridors and talks about how those need to occur. I will also point out that it leaves a blank box over the middle of downtown, which has to be determined first. And certainly, the downtown mobility project has been a priority. We allocated money for it in the past, but we don't have a solid plan yet that we can say, okay, this many dollars should be absolutely allocated this year to do, because we don't have that last piece, to do what?
And we don't feel like MTA has something they've picked as their low-hanging fruit that they're absolutely going to do next year?
We do not. Not at this stage.
And to be clear, that was intentional on their part. They kind of provided what they thought was a menu of starting, potential starting points. And so we wanted to carry that forward.
Gotcha. And I'm sure they have to respond to grants and things like that as well.
But as an example, buildings that critically need sprinklers or an emergency management system that is at a critical stage, those are things that we, that's the only reason that they're in that A, is that we've hit this critical moment when it has to happen.
Okay. How about sidewalks? Just to push a little bit.
You know that I'm as big an advocate for sidewalks, our department certainly is. But making them an A at any particular amount is what's difficult. So, and I'm trying to remember, what was the total, and Michael Briggs is here at the ready, standing there. What was the total amount that we said we needed to complete the necessary improvements for sidewalks? So did we have?
I believe it was $800 million.
I'm sorry?
$800 million.
$800 million.
But we have said we'll commit $30 million.
Right.
Do we want to at least throw that much in there as an A, knowing we could go up from there?
Well, is that the commitment in the following year? Is that the commitment in 18?
And how do you prioritize which sidewalks?
I'm not asking you to prioritize which sidewalks. I'm just saying, I want to see $30 million at least for sidewalks.
I think Councilman Cooper would have us name the exact sidewalks. But I don't know that, do we have that commitment in this, in this next year, that that's the exact amount? I don't know that I've heard that level of commitment for the next budget, because I don't have that. But at Level A, I would say that, and I'm trying to think of it, we're halfway through, let's say, a sidewalk project to do sidewalks all the way down Galton Route. And we've got, we've achieved half of it, but we haven't completed the project. And now we're going into the next fiscal cycle. Then I would say that should probably be an A. But I don't know that we have that situation in front of us with sidewalks. I'm all for committing as much as we possibly can towards sidewalks, but I just don't know that we have a project like that that meets the A standard.
And I would further add, I mean, one of the things we did look very carefully at was the range of those master plans that were coming out at a very similar time. I would note that the walk and bike draft was released while we were midway through this process and hasn't come forward to be adopted yet. It's scheduled for?
It's a June meeting, I think.
In June. So it was, again, out of an abundance of caution and wanting to sort of respect the work that went into very major planning efforts, each of which has substantial, passionate constituencies behind it, that we kind of want to sort of pause while they get finalized and programmed and look ahead to next year to begin prioritizing.
Okay. I'll accept that for now, but I'll keep pushing on that one.
Can I ask a really quick follow-up question to her point? I know where I'm sort of at for it, and Brian hasn't.
I have one kind of follow-up, too.
So let's say Metro came back and said, we want to commit $30 million to sidewalks. How would you prioritize these improvements in this plan? Is that something that ultimately?
So we're sort of moving the ship. It's been going in one direction, and we've been trying to get it in another where we have more transparency, but also some flexibility with the sidewalk programs. So we've been working hand-in-hand with Public Works on the walk and bike plan. So we've set out a timeline right now where we're rerunning the score. We have our scores now. That's just a more quantitative analysis of what sidewalks need to be done. But every year around this time, we'll rerun it, go through and do a constructibility audit on it, because some of those that get scored very high will have to be kicked out because of topography reasons, there's just not enough money to do it, various issues. Then we'll be presenting that online, both the scores, justifications for adjusting the projects that are in it, and then having meetings on, community meetings on which project should move forward. And then hopefully, we're getting in a cycle that we begin this process a little bit earlier each year. And so, and budget time comes, and when the budget's passed in the summer, they're able to take their list and almost run with it with just a few tweaks, once we know the funding amount.
Commissioner Tibbs?
My question is kind of back to the process. And I do, while I'm talking, I do want to commend staff and Greg for this, a lot of work. When you went over it with me, I was, when it slammed on my desk, I was like, oh my God.
Which is also worth noting, that staff has met with all the Commissioners one-on-one and gone through the capital improvement budget with them. Tonight is not the only time that they have been presented these.
It wasn't the first time, yeah.
As opposed to the past where that actually did happen.
So it was a very good description then and tonight. But one thing about the process in this sidewalk, is why I'm asking it, because it's, the $30 million, we're using that number, it's not, it's not actually shown up in here, right? The $30 million? So?
I've seen it.
You've seen it, the actual?
The sum of all the projects.
Yeah.
The sum of all the projects. So it's, so we would, we could take a project and move it out to A or whatever. So sidewalks is one thing, but let's say if a school or whatever, we can make that prioritization ourselves. That's, I'm just making sure I understand the process, because sidewalks is an easy one, not easy, but you know, it's kind of high right now. Do you know what I mean?
Certainly. The Commission could, let's say that there was a project in here. Let's say that there's a particular portion of sidewalk in Davidson County that the Commission feels passionately about. And that instead of being a B, which means that it's eligible for the Council and the Administration to choose that project and spend money on it through the capital spending plan, which is where the real decision is made about where the money is spent. If it's in B, it's eligible for that. By putting it A, we're calling it out and saying, much like, you know, a health center that desperately needs this or an emergency center, we feel like that this sidewalk is a critical piece because of a safety reason. And I actually can think of a couple of stretches of sidewalk that might meet that need. But it, but all it would do is then move it, is it would, the recommendation would then say, this is an A recommendation instead of a B. Council will have the ability to approve the expenditure for As or Bs or not, but it is simply informing them, we really think this piece is a priority. And we may get there with the capital improvements budget. In the years to come, you may see that there are more As and fewer Bs, to be clear about where we think the priorities are. I think, given the knowledge that we have on these items today, it would be very difficult to call those out in that way.
And just to clarify, there's a capital program for sidewalks that's included on page 16 of the CIB, and that's laying out $30 million of spending each year. The request for individual sidewalk segments entered in otherwise far exceeds that total.
Right. So it's the program, $30 million a year, that to me seems like would be appropriate to put in the A, and not say, I'm picking any sidewalk, but just, we're going to commit to spending at least this much on sidewalks in fiscal year 2018. That seems to me consistent with the priorities of Nashville Next and what's been talked about. I just.
Good point. And I'll return the?
Thank you. Okay. I'm almost done. Speak back to maintenance. There is, I appreciate the fact that the 1% art fund is in the A group, because that's money that's already there. I know there has been some discussion of the fact that that can only be used for physical new projects. As a member of the Hillsborough West End neighborhood, which is working really hard to raise a whole lot of money to do maintenance on a piece of public art, we would very much like to see some type of mechanism being invented or put into place, not necessarily in this budget, but if that's possible, I'd love to get it started now, to dedicate maintenance money. And I know there's some references to maintenance in two of the line items under the arts. So does that include some actual maintenance for existing art?
It does not include maintenance for existing art. What it includes is a study to determine the scope of public art maintenance needs and where, how they are best funded and addressed, whether it's modifying the 1%, a new funding mechanism, you know, operating money, what have you.
Okay. So that particular study is the opportunity to figure out how to do this right?
Right.
And that's funded, that's in the A?
That's in the A, because it's a quirk of, you know, kind of how you fund studies, that if it's a study of a capital system, you can, you know, kind of, it's a, treat it as one of the capital expenditures.
Okay.
But it's to determine the scope of things outside of public arts current control. So things like the dragon.
Gotcha, gotcha. So that we work toward a solution. Okay, I think that's a good thing to be doing now. I hope they come up with a good answer, because we need that.
Council lady, if I could add, one of the challenges there is that a lot of the maintenance projects don't meet the minimum for our capital improvement.
Right.
And so it has to be a certain value to meet the threshold for capital improvements, and often the maintenance needs are less than that.
Gotcha. This one's more. So if that helps get it into here somewhere, I'd love to do that, too. Those are all the questions I thought of at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I have one, is Greg and the staff and Doug, what an amazing job. Getting to this type of accountability and transparency in public budgeting is very difficult. And I am excited because this is going to be the long haul, and turning this ship is not easy. But you're getting very quickly to where we can both have an efficient and effective government toward that triple bottom line, which is almost that magic, that holy grail out there. So I cheer you on, and we'll do everything I can to support that. I do have a question, though, about collaboration. I noticed that there were some projects in here that didn't get funded, particularly around sidewalks. And all over town, I see sidewalks being built and then torn up to put water in, or then they're built and they're torn up to put lights in. And yet, that collaborative piece did not get funded, which feels to me like it would be an efficient way to spend some of the sidewalk money that I'm so supportive of right here.
So as a, in part, as a reminder, it's not that it's not funded, it's that it's not recommended at that highest level. But also, you know, that sort of collaboration goes on kind of constantly throughout kind of the work that Metro Departments do. There's an increased focus on that over the past year, year and a half. And I think they've made great strides. There's kind of a bi-monthly meeting of infrastructure departments to sort of check in on major projects that are going on. There's also an effort to overhaul the system that Departments use to oversee upcoming work, to see where there are potential conflicts, where someone has a need in one year and someone else has a need in five years. Trying to pull all of that together has been a big focus. Separate from us, we've been involved, but that's been a big focus of the last year and a half. And I think, believe that we're making great strides. But I don't think that there's like a specific kind of collaboration piece that's, that is hinging on this, that's not happening.
Well, there's one particularly around, I think, the Metro Water Services, and I happen to live in a neighborhood where that's happening. And so I really do think any kind of funding that will allow us, both for those budgetary purposes, but also as a city, to do better collaboration and model that, the stronger this kind of initiative can be. And I want, think this can win all kinds of city awards. But I would love to see some of the collaborative efforts that were requested to be funded back, at least being put on some type of A list for some of that money.
And it would, it would help us if we can talk after about that particular segment. It'd be interesting to find out what the situation is.
Sure.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I think that was all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Hagendier?
I really keep lauding on the accolades of how, this is even from last year to this year, and my last year was my first year, that this was so much better of a process. And I know it was not painless, and I think that we would put in a, recommend raises and time off if you had a nicer boss. I think you'd need some days off for, I'm just saying.
No, I, no.
Yeah. And it's a model for all of us in public service. I know that we struggle with this as well. I, the questions that I would have had have been asked, but one thing, maybe it's answered already. In some of these projects, they're in progress, but they're in the B section. So can you explain to me, if they're in progress, and they're all different, so some may have, I see one that says unexpendanted funding, so the money's been laid out, but it hasn't been spent, so therefore, maybe they don't. But can you kind of tell us why if it's in progress, it's in B and not in A?
Primarily, that's tied to our, I'm assuming you're talking about Public Works projects?
Yes.
Yeah. That's partly tied to just kind of the evolution that they've been going over over the past several months, and kind of the state of where they're at with their projects in the CIB. Their projects came in a little bit late, and they had difficulties with Hyperion, so they're just, they're not as well scoped out, like we haven't gone through the review as much with them, is primarily the case. I mean, one of the things that's been, you know, kind of the way we wound up being involved with Council requests this year, a lot of them have funneled through us in a way that they haven't before. And it's been difficult, but also tremendously productive for us, understanding kind of what Public Works is weighing as they go through that process. And so we've got a better sense of where the program overall needs to head. We were, you know, kind of in line with our conservatism overall with the A projects. We were taking sort of a little bit of a step back on prioritizing Public Works projects as well. I mean, just in general.
That makes sense.
I think, my hope is very much over the next half a year, nine months, as we get ready for next year's CIB, I think we have a lot of agreement between us and Public Works right now in terms of next steps to make more sense of their projects overall. Because of the way, you know, in a lot of cases, their projects aren't halfway through in the way that, you know, the Sheriff's Office downtown, or, you know, the police headquarters are kind of partly through with their funding. They're kind of very slow-moving acquisition of right-of-way to get to the point where you start construction. And so it's, one of the things that we want to do is get a better understanding of the phasing of all of their projects before I think we'd be comfortable treating them the same way as the rest.
And that makes a lot of sense. And I can say one thing to all of the different Departments, if I can, tell me, you can kick me later. You know, the more they can provide in detail and information to us and to the staff, the better off they're going to be and we're going to be and the Council's going to be. They, the staff can only do with what they're given, not saying garbage in, garbage out, but that has but that happens. So if you want things prioritized, you need to provide the information in a timely manner, it needs to be fully scoped, and you need to provide more detail. I think it's, the cooperation's coming, I've seen collaborations increase from last year. This is a partnership and a collaborative process, not a gotcha, but it is really about good government and fiscal responsibility and transparency. And I know some departments have struggled and challenged in the past with those sorts of, back to working together across agencies. So I would recommend that. And also with council, it would be really helpful if you guys would go through these old projects and get them out of there. That's all, I mean, it's, when you look at something that says it's older than me, which, I'm not going to give you my age, but it was 72, and I was not born in 72, I was not on the earth in 72, but this project is still in his budget. So, so it would be really helpful if, you know, council and the agent departments would go through here and clean out this old stuff, so that we could focus on the priorities. That's my only comment.
And to your point, when we started this exercise, we knew that this was going to be a, a culture shock, frankly, because a lot of departments weren't thinking years and years out. When you ask them for their, their capital improvement projects, everything was in one year. And you'd say, well, can you prioritize those for me? Nope, nope, I can't do that. You know, you're asking me to pick my favorite child, can't do it. They, they all are the most important thing. And it wasn't until staff spent a lot of time with the departments and explained to them, look, we can help you get these things achieved if we can figure out how to spread them out over years, and talk to them about how to do long-range planning. A lot of, a lot of departments actually were already doing it, and so it was a fairly easy adjustment there. But for some of them, this was a complete, as I said, culture shock about how to go about doing that. But I, I believe it to Greg's say, but he has told me that a, a lot of them have embraced it now where they haven't in the past. And so we're still working through what are their long-range goals, and how do you sit down and internally make that decision, so, in an informed way, so that then you can sit down with us and present it in a, in a better way. We have one department, I'm not going to call them out, that still has everything in the first year, and so we, we're getting to the point, I think, in this next year, we're going to say, okay, if you can't make that decision, then we're going to make it for you. But it would be better if you maybe gave it another run, so.
And I also, I really like the study, the, hey, this is great, but let's go back and study it, or let's, why don't we look and see if there's now a, a new road that makes making that connecting road completely impossible? So I appreciate the effort and time and energy, and I'm not sure how, it was only a very few people that accomplished a big thing here, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Gobel?
There we go, that one doesn't work. Show this one. It's worth noting that after my first meeting, I'm nowhere, I'm sitting about as far from a microphone as you can get up.
You know, we're all out of it today.
And so, yeah, it's, I'm off to a good start. I, I, this is an overwhelming thing to understand, as well as it's organized, and so I really do appreciate all the work everybody's done. One quick question, as going forward, can the council add projects to this, and they can amend it really pretty much in any way they would like? This is a recommendation.
That's correct. There's a, there's a process laid out for council to add amendments during their budgeting process. And one thing that's been noted by the council is that they have a lot of information and for them to deal with, with both the operating budget and the capital improvements budget in a very short period of time. And Council Lady Weiner approached our department about trying to work with them earlier on in, in the year, to sit down and look at projects and go through and score them in a way where there can be a lot more thought put into those amendments. And so over the, the course of this next year, we're going to be working closer with them. But they do, there is already a process where they get to add amendments, and ultimately, it's theirs to, to pass or, or not.
That's about all I've got.
Commissioner Deas?
Thanks. I had similar questions, and I also want to congratulate you for your great work. I love the way it's organized, everything is easy to read. I had a few questions about the process as well, similar to the question that was just asked, was about the process. So if, once this is approved by the council, is, does this become a static document, or can they amend things after that?
It's, they can amend things after that. It's essentially, I think, been past practice that it's not, it hasn't often been amended until the, the annual update, like until the next year's cycle, but there is a provision for them to, for amendments to come through the Planning Commission, and then to council, where it takes, I believe, a two-thirds majority to amend, I mean, it takes a two-thirds majority to, to adopt as well.
Okay. That was just because we have so many B projects, and, you know, most of these are recommended if funding is available. So let's say all of the A projects have gone through well, and we have that funding available, how do we decide which B projects become A project, or, you know, which ones become prioritized or gets done first?
Right. I mean, essentially, putting a project in, in B defers that to the mayor and council. Mayor, when she presents her capital spending plan, and then council, when they adopt. We don't anticipate them modifying the Planning Commission's recommendation, it's guidance for them as they, as they make their priorities. So essentially, a B recommendation defers for this year. One way to think about it is, in the past years, every project has been a B project. Everything is in there, you know, recommend his plan if funding is available. So what we've started doing this year is narrow that down a little bit, and in future years, we want to continue to narrow it down.
So the B projects don't really ever become A projects, basically, they, we don't, they don't come back to the Planning Commission, and we don't have to vote on it, you know, like, you know, for example, this B project from Parks decides to come, you know, through, and the mayor decides they want to go through it, we don't have to vote on it to go to the A category, right?
Correct. I mean, it would, if it hasn't been funded, and they continue to request it, it would still be their next year for consideration, and we would reassess every year. But mid-year, if there are further funding decisions to be made, like the funding doesn't come back to Planning Commission.
So the, the A projects are the appropriate projects that are also priorities? The B projects are more like the menu of appropriate projects that they could select for funding?
I think one of the things that I guess makes me a little bit worried or confused is not saying that some, I just think that some B projects could be prioritized more than others, in my opinion. So I guess what kind of worries me is how do, you know, who decides, or how do we all agree on which B projects should be, you know, built first, you know, being the first one that gets built and things like that?
I mean, this year, again, we, we are recommending deferring that. Certainly, one of the things we can talk about for, for next year or future years is breaking that B category into maybe two tiers.
And for, again, for everyone watching this later, I think it's, it's worth pointing out that the capital improvements budget is identifying all the capital plan, all the capital improvements that we, that the various departments, and that the commission, and the council, and the mayor's office feels like that we need to be considering as, as projects to do in the coming years. It is not a spending plan for this year, that actually comes later, it's a bit of a misnomer. The spending plan actually is where the decision's made about which projects are or are not going to be funded. And that is the exclusive purview of the mayor and the council, and they will make that decision independent of, of this body.
Hopefully informed.
But informed. The, the point of this exercise is, one, for all the departments to go through it, and for us to, to look for efficiencies, and to have, make sure that we're being very thoughtful about our long-range plans. And then what we're hoping the document becomes even more so is a tool for the administration and for the council then to use to make informed decisions on the, on the spending plan. And I think then, as we keep narrowing it, as Greg just pointed out, in future years, I believe that it would be very difficult, hopefully, in future years, to pull something out of X and say, yeah, we, we've heard why this doesn't make any sense and why we shouldn't do it, but we, we'd like to do it anyway. And we, what we would hope is that that would inform the public to say, well, wait a second, that doesn't make any sense, and your commission has explained to you why that doesn't make any sense, so why are you doing this? That hasn't been where, where this budget, where the capital improvements budget's been in the past, but it is our hope that is where it gets.
Thanks, that makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad you, you know, kind of walked through that so everybody could hear that, too. I think this is a great document, and it's, I, I have a lot, like, a lot of hope for the next coming years. I think if we continue this process and this, you know, this organization, I think we can get really far, and the collaboration within the departments, I think, is going in the great, in a great direction. So I think I support this document, and I hope that the council will, too. And I know there are going to be, you know, areas that we will continue to work on and change before it's approved, but I think this is a good foundation.
Can I ask you just a couple, one or two questions? Very technical. So I noticed in the council priority section, there was a difference between council priority versus council requested, and what, what's the difference between that?
Right. So requests, we're just trying to begin sourcing it a little bit more clearly when the project comes through, just from a council member versus a, a department. We haven't been able to go back to all of the older projects and do that, but certainly as we begin hearing about them now, we try to capture it.
And then council priority would be a project prioritized in that council?
By that, by that council member.
Okay.
So essentially, when we sat down and, and we had our meetings, you know, we would get, you know, this would be good, 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 you know? And we would try to say, well, but okay, what's your top, like, three or four priorities?
Yeah.
And sometimes we got it, and sometimes not. Where we did, we, we want to try to convey that.
Okay.
So that, you know, kind of as we understand things, and as, you know, perhaps walk-in bike or, you know, departments look at those, they, they understand, this may be the simple thing, but in the long term, this is a higher priority for the, the district.
You, we will not be able to reduce everything to a numerical value that differentiate, differentiates every project from another one. That, it will not be that clear. But no one knows their district better than the district council members do. And so when they tell us that a particular project that is falling within a category is a, a greater priority, then we're going to give that weight, because we know that they understand, they're hearing from their constituents, they hear what the public's telling them in those districts, and then we want to, to deal with that accordingly, so.
Okay. My other question was, I guess, after Councilman Withers' comments about Envision KC, I didn't see that that was one of the priority or the plans, and I know with MDHA adopting these other Envision plans, is that something that we want to kind of put up there as, as a component for consistency? Or have we thought about that?
I mean, the, so all of the, the Envision KC is in there as sort of a, a set of projects that, you know, are kind of moving forward together.
Okay.
And then, as a separate program, we've worked with MDHA to convey all of the other Envision projects that, that they're pursuing.
Okay.
So that they're, they're kind of all, all collected in one place as well.
Okay, so hopefully, when council sees this and starts to see the kinds of improvements, they'll understand that this is necessary towards, you know, what we're long run trying to do, and.
Right. And, 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 you know, hopefully, ultimately, we can, we can start conveying, you know, kind of as more of these come down the line, you know, how they're spending out through the years, you know, will, will stack up, because, you know, it is, it is an extremely ambitious program, you know, for one site, but then across several sites.
Right.
So that's, that's, we're working with them to move from kind of the planning phase for the rest of them, you know, as those plans get finalized, into what is a spending program look like.
Okay, okay. That's it for me. Any other comments?
One more question. Did, did we add any projects, the Planning Commission, or is all this given to us and us sorted it out?
The Planning Commission itself does have requests. I, honestly, I've been at a remove from them, so I can't rattle them off the top of my head. George may be able to come up and speak to them. If you have, but, but those are kind of the, the department requests, for, for example, study for open space in Sobro and the Gulch, kind of transportation pilot projects, like the, those kinds of things, as well as an, an office space.
So those things are things.
Which is a non-general plan project.
A nice big window office, which you deserve.
Well, I would point that he rated it kind of low, so. He was called into my office after that.
So, but beyond those, I mean, do we say, well, we need sidewalks in a certain area? We hadn't, do we, are we proactive in that area, or should we be?
I think that the closest, closest thing to that is upcoming, our, our intent to begin doing centers planning, where we try to take a look at the key areas that we want to encourage to grow more, and grow in a certain fashion, and develop out of that plan a series of, of recommendations. The, the goal would be to, to work so closely with departments doing that, and have them embrace that, that, you know, that's a normal, pardon me, a normal part of their request at that point, rather than something that we would submit to be done by someone else.
I'll, I'll also add that staff has been working with the other departments that are generating master plans, so that we're giving them input, and they're looking at Nashville Next for their master plans, all of the ones that Greg mentioned, and a lot of others, so that all of the plans line up.
Can you go back to all the plans that have been done? They've so integrated into Nashville Next, many of them, that it's even expressed in their logos. But next year, a lot of what we do is to take these plans, or to take the projects and compare them to the plan, and so a lot of what we're trying to achieve is going to be expressed in those scores, and how well it, these projects are matching up with Nashville Next.
And so certainly, we would look to, not just their overall program, but the pieces within it, give them greater scrutiny to, to, to see if there are recommendations that further the vision quicker versus parts of their program that, you know, don't seem as high a priority from the overall county-wide view.
I guess one follow-up question to that. I mean, we do definitely hear we, every two weeks about certain areas that are going to be problems for roads or traffic, or, and I assume that that's kind of communicated on a, on a regular basis. I mean, like, all of the discussion around infrastructure on Murphy'sboro Road, as we add multifamily units, and that, ultimately, that bubbles up into their planning that would come to the CIB, but that's a good example of where Planning Commission might kind of inform what the departments are doing.
That, that's right. And, and so part of what we're trying to do, you know, part of our learning process this year, you know, thinking of transportation in particular, is trying to get a handle, not just on these CIB requests, and, and, you know, bring some structure to that and some organization and priority to it, but also understanding how that can inform development requests as they come forward. We haven't been attending for the last couple of months, as we've been working on the CIB, but myself or El Hamdaha attend most Planning Commission meetings to maintain a kind of, an awareness on what, what that discussion is, where the key areas are, and what topics do come up.
I think we can probably start giving you the list. Some of these roads are pretty familiar now. Any other comments or discussion?
This may not be the right forum to ask this question. We, we've talked about the many times that a development comes in front of us, and they've done a traffic impact study, and the neighbors say, but there are four other projects that also have fed into this, and the cumulative effect is such and such. Does that conversation that we've begun to have have any place in the capital improvements budget, or is that a whole other venue to have that?
That's really a different venue, but that's more of the discussion around the division of transportation that we're working on.
Okay.
Because I think that's, that's pulling those elements together. But I, it also on the, in, where we don't have a lot of projects, and we know that we have infrastructure issues because of things that have already occurred, then that's going to be shown here, that would be within the capital improvements budget. It should show up as a priority. But the act, how we're doing, and we're looking at this now, how we do the traffic studies, the overall breadth of what the traffic study should be, how those are looked at differently in an urban, walkable. in an urban, walkable setting as opposed to a suburban setting. You know, in the past, that's been more, it's been treated fairly equally, when clearly our hope is that if we're building a walkable community, that the number of parking spaces isn't as much, that the priorities for the sidewalks are greater than the lanes, and a lot of the other things. It's, the traffic study should express that as well. That's something that we're working on, but we're working on in conjunction with the development of the Division of Transportation.
Good. Okay. And then another question. I think this is great. I think we probably will want to move approval. I would, to go back to my, my topic of sidewalks, I would, I would love to propose an amendment to add, to re-revise the side, the, it's item 06PW0019, which is just a sidewalks program that is $30 million for FY 2018, to revise that to an A rating as opposed to a B. I would move that amendment.
Do we have a second, so we can have discussion? Okay.
So just so that I'm absolutely clear, and the record's clear about what you're suggesting is, we have, the staff has a selection or a, a list of suggested amendments, and you would like this to be added to the staff's list of amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Can you point us to the page where that is again?
Yeah, so if you go to page 3-16, Roman numeral 3-16, it's just a very general, we're going to build sidewalks. It doesn't prioritize any one sidewalk over the other. It just says, at least this amount of money will be in the budget for sidewalks. So it's, it's not making any, any value judgments about which parts of town would get them. That, I think that follows underneath them. I love that.
It does include the priority sidewalk, the draft priority sidewalk network from Walkin' Bike, but within that, it doesn't prioritize any of the sidewalks. So it is limiting to that priority sidewalk network.
Interesting. Do we know what the cost of that priority sidewalk network is?
It's going to be in excess of $30 million.
That's useful information.
I believe for the, the one that we, we included in here was tied to $30 million over five years. But maybe, hopefully, Michael will be able to confirm that.
We'll have to look into it.
Okay. But we think it's in excess of $30 million.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So then by doing this, then I would, if we were to spend $30 million, it would have to, every bit of it be just for priority sidewalks, and not for any of the others that are listed that might not particularly be on those.
No, you could still do that. You, you're just saying, you're just saying that, that the $30 million that matches with our priority sidewalks that we already have, that the commission believes those to be of the utmost importance, or have an A rating within the priority of all the projects. But the other projects would still be in the Bs, and so they would still be eligible for funding.
And I believe the intent from Walkin' Bike, Michael, help me clarify if I'm wrong, is to lay out these priority sidewalks as kind of the priority and the goal, but there may be refinement as they go through the process of actually getting to construction. And so we've, Public Works has written the request to highlight the priority sidewalk network, but not limited to that.
Not limited to that.
For that flexibility.
Right. And, but I think this is still appropriate in the capital improvements budget to handle it this way. I would hesitate doing it that way in the spending plan and identifying it with that narrow scope. I think that that might pigeonhole you in a way that, for instance, you decide that something that's listed as a high priority in the Walkin' Bike plan, but we get into it and we have difficulty acquiring the land that we need right away, but we get tied up with a property owner and we can't move forward on that one. But yet, maybe something that's not on that list, but just below it, we end up, an opportunity comes up and we're able to move right forward on that one, and we would want to have that flexibility. And so while, if you do it this way and leave them as A, you list this as A, but you leave the rest in B, that, that flexibility still exists.
Okay. I think the flexibility is important. But to me, it's also important to make a statement that sidewalks are an important part of the Nashville Next, the principles, the accessibility, and that, that our budget should reflect that, or at least the CIB should reflect that.
So I'd completely agree with you. My fear is, how come we don't do it for transit? Or how come we're not coming up? I mean, I haven't gone through this item by item, but are there other general categories that we would say, we really think this needs, you know, $30 million to sidewalks, $40 million to this, $60 million to here? So we ultimately create the spending plan without, you know, designating what those things are, but what we think the broad category should be? And I guess, I mean, I think we can definitely say sidewalks are critical for our planning and very closely tie with what we oversee every day. But at the same time, are we opening ourselves up to something that we should be looking at this across all categories?
And that's what I was thinking, too. I mean, I would support it, but what if, if I were dug into it and I felt like a school needed to be up there, you know, like this area, I know it's a higher priority, so it'd be good, and one day we could get to that point, but we're definitely not there today.
Right. I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not listing specific sidewalks. This is just a general concept, but I hear what you're saying as well.
Well, I mean, I look right next to it, and it's the, it's the bikeways.
I thought about throwing that in, too, but I figured that would be pushing it.
Do we want to do the $30 million and say, but I mean.
Since you brought it up.
Yeah. I mean, but that maybe is, but then, again, I go to MTA's plan, and do we set aside, say we need to set aside?
Well, and I asked that question, and they don't have a specific, they don't have a specific plan, which is why I was not there. And they don't have a, I don't know if they have a category, whatever.
Well, I'll defer to them.
Well, we have a plan, they have a plan. We just don't have, a corridor hasn't been selected, and the study, so the study of a particular corridor isn't in front of us just yet.
Right.
So that, that's why I would say that it'd be premature to do that right now.
Okay. I would agree with that, and I think, my concern is, we, Public Works has a lot of things in here, right? And none of them are an A for a reason at this point. And I trust the process that the staff has gone through, and I would be hesitant to start saying, we're going to put $30 million and put it to A, and this is why, because it's a priority. I agree it's a priority, but so are schools, so is healthcare, so is transit, so is KC, Envision KC, and then we get into, we could dismantle our entire process. I mean, we've worked really hard to do, and then all of a sudden start saying, well, you don't only have to submit a list of projects, because we're just putting a lump sum and a map on it, and we'll, we'll give you a priority. And just that, I think we can get there, but I'm concerned if we do that now, that's where we're headed.
Any other input from staff on this thinking?
I was going to say, if I can clarify, I think the reason both you see the $30 million and the $5 million for the sidewalks and the bikeways is because when we went through this process, it kind of gave Public Works a little bit better direction in terms of the funding that they need each year to kind of sustain the level investment year after year. And so I think they have a better idea, just going through this process, what the funding needs to be each year, so it doesn't fluctuate as much as it has in the past. And then I just think the decisions on the in-motion plan just haven't been, been made as to which corridor at this point.
I mean, is it, makes sense that a recommendation be made that, that the, the plan, something general, like the plan reflects some of the high priorities of these specific other strategic plans, or something to that effect?
I'm not sure how we would indicate that beyond.
Yeah. It's, it's a timing issue at this point. By next year, they'll have more information on their implementation strategies for both of these, and so we'll be better able to integrate it next year. Where they are in their master planning processes at this point in time just didn't lend itself to that.
We know through empirical research and tons of it, that strategically aligned budgets fail for that little pebble that's in your shoe, which is called collaboration. And there's only one request in here for a department asking funding to collaborate. And I think it's such a small one, yet it sets a model in place for us of cross-institutional collaboration. But I just want to go on the record, I don't know if I'm making a suggestion or just, collaboration across departments may be one of the hardest things we do in the public sector, and to not take it really, that request really to heart, I think is not to offer our city a model for what that kind of collaboration could look like when it's highly effective. So it's a little bitty request, but I think it's, it's really important, so.
Can you identify it by number or page number?
It's page 12 on the Public Works in the very back. It's page one of, it's under Public Works, page 12.
So one, so we have a motion on, in a second, and we're discussing. So I'm wondering, do we need to wrap up our specific motion and then open it back up to other discussion?
I think we do. Based on the discussion, I'm happy to withdraw, knowing that I get to continue this discussion, so.
This is a sidewalk collaboration.
Are you willing to withdraw your second?
Okay. Thank you for the discussion.
The motion will be withdrawn.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, you can.
Well, I'm just picking up the same song, second verse, except this is sidewalk collaboration, so I'm still singing about that.
Let me point out, so the collaboration piece that you're talking about while Greg's looking at that project, it's been a high priority for this mayor about how we collaborate. And I've been with Metro off and on for 20 years through the legal department, the mayor's office, and now the planning department. And I will tell you that I've never seen the level of collaboration that we have today, not by a long shot. And it's been because, in big part, she has driven that home to everyone. And she started these, the pit program. And it requires that everybody try to find ways to collaborate and come and do presentations, and it's additional money that you can get into your operating budget for that very purpose, to drive the sort of thought process that you're talking about today, and finding ways for the departments to collaborate. So I don't want, I, I wouldn't want anybody to have the impression that we're, that we're not really actively seeking every opportunity to do that. We are, but I'm not sure about this project in particular, how it calls it out differently.
It's a project 17PW001, sidewalk collaboration between coordination of sidewalk and drainage improvements with Metro Water Services. It's a Public Works project, and I, I think its origin was last year, when the mayor was, you know, kind of starting up the focus that Doug talked about of coordination between departments. It was kind of a line item for them to be able to support adding sidewalks when Metro Water is doing work. I mean, it's, I think if, if the commission determines that it's an A project, I mean, it supports work that's, that's ongoing, it doesn't have sort of a specific work program attached to it. It's more like a line item in case they need to sort of pitch in to support that work. I don't know that it's been programmed out in any way.
So reading this, it seems to be fun, yeah, just, it's set aside to make sure that when Water Services is identifying areas where they're going to, to replace stormwater improvements, that at that same time that they collaborate with Public Works to make sure that the proper sidewalks are going in, which is, Michael, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, briefly to it. So it's essentially what Mr. Sloan said, is it's a set aside for when they're going into a water project to do a sidewalk. They're going back, Water Services is now going back to Public Works when they wrap up a project, and getting both input from planning and Public Works as to the design of the sidewalk. And I'm going to get the street wrong, but I can tell you, it's in Councilmember Sledge's district, I believe, that off of Belmont, there was a water project. We've given them, okay, it was Allen's district, guidance on, it's which?
On Beechwood.
That's it. Giving them guidance on the sidewalk issues. And so it was Water Services going back to Public Works and planning for guidance on that.
And I'm not sure it matters particularly what the project is, as much as it is that we are really fostering and making very explicit the value of collaborating through the planning process.
I was just going to add that in, in supporting the development of this document, Greg and the other staff members have two different sets of teams of Metro departments, an infrastructure team and a capital facilities team that meet at regular intervals and go over a wide variety of projects, everything from entire corridors to, you know, things that are upcoming in the next couple of months, so that all the departments can learn and contribute to what they could collaborate on.
Very good. And just as a side note, congratulations on your applying for the, which is the pit program, which is what this is all about, so.
Yes, we volunteered for that.
So do we have any other, I kind of lost track where we are, but I think we're at the point where we can solicit a motion? Some have some, oh, and Doug actually has a motion?
Yeah, I can't make it.
That he can't make.
Is there a certain thing we have to read?
Would you like to make the motion? Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, approve the submission of the CIB to the mayor with the amendments and the staff report, and present it by staff.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. I know Doug wants to leave.
I'm perfectly happy staying here all night.
We're not done yet. We're not done.
So what do you bring that, if I wanted to make a recommendation to end that?
We have an update on the short-term rental properties that we will be discussing next week.
Yes, I, I had a number of requests from commissioners that wanted a primer on short-term rental issues, so that in next week's public hearing that we'll have here next Thursday regarding six short-term rental bills, which I believe today may have been cut down to four.
That's correct.
Two withdrawn, the two regarding moratoriums, that you'd be able to make a more informed decision. So what we did was, I say we, of course, I mean Carrie, did, is put together a presentation to go over some of those elements.
So I'm, I'm going to touch really briefly on what the regulations require today, and then walk through what each of the six bills would do. So again, just a little bit of history, we started looking at this issue in 2014, when the zoning administrator determined that there weren't any regulations for STRPs, and therefore, they were allowed to operate anywhere a residential use is allowed. Council then in 2015 added an STRP use to Title 17, the zoning code, but added the standards for STRPs into Title VI of the code. Since then, the Title VI standards have been, they have been adjusted a number of times, and then last in December 6, 2016. However, most recently, the planning commission and council approved BL 2016 492, which deleted the standards from Title VI and moved them all into Title 17. What that means for you all is that whenever the STRP standards are modified from now on, they will come to the planning commission for a recommendation. And at the time, the intent was to move the standards, but not to modify them. So now we're looking at the standards that have been moved into Title 17. This is just a snapshot of the permits that we have currently, or as of April 11th. So right now, there are about 2,661 permitted within the county, and you can see they're broken down by the three types and countywide versus the UZO. So approximately 70% of, 67% of the permitted STRPs are within the UZO, and that is a number only of those who have come and gotten permits from the codes department. Of owner occupied, 63% of them are within the UZO, and of multifamily, 92% are within the UZO. Non-owner occupied, 55% are within the UZO. So walking through the current regulations, it does require permits for an STRP, and there are three types, an owner occupied, a non-owner occupied, and a multifamily permit. For the non-owner occupied permits in RRS, they are limited to no more than 3% of the single-family or two-family residential units within each census tract. And I'll have a map later that shows the percentages by census tract. There, a change in the regulations in the last year is that there can now be only one STRP permit per lot in RRS. So if you have a duplex, both sides can't have an STRP permit. There are several regulations that are required to be met in to be met in the application. They do have to name a responsible party. They have to provide proof of insurance, written notification both to the adjacent property owners and to the homeowners association, as well as if they're owner occupied, to two documents giving proof of owner occupation, and that they have paid all of their taxes, including their property taxes and room occupancy and sales taxes. Also listed in the regulations, of course, are, they need to abide by all noise and waste management restrictions, meeting all building and fire safety codes, that they have to provide parking as required in the zoning code, and that no recreational vehicles, buses, or trailers can be visible from the street or property in conjunction with the STRP use. STRPs are not permitted to prepare food, and the minimum renter has to be at least 21 years of age. Right now, the maximum occupancy for an STRP is twice the number of bedrooms plus four. So, yes. And that's the current maximum occupancy. They also have to post the name and telephone number of the local responsible party so that that person can answer calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is an annual permit, so they expire every year, and that the renewals can be made through the codes department. If you don't have any documented complaints through the codes department, you do have a little bit of a grace period in renewing your permit, but not if you have violations. There is also a process for the zoning administrator to revoke a permit, specifically if you have three violations within the past 12 months, your permit may be revoked. And once it's been revoked, no new permit shall be issued for the same property for a period of one year. Right now, the penalty for operating a short-term rental permit, a short-term rental without a permit is a $50 fine imposed by a court of competent jurisdiction. However, the ordinance does say that each day of operation is a separate offense. So, of the six proposed ordinances, you can see here that two were withdrawn, but we will walk through all of them very quickly. The first one, BL 2017 608 revises the zoning code to create two separate uses, one modifying the language that's in the code now, that's for STRP owner occupied only, and then creating a second use for STRP not owner occupied. This would allow STRP owner occupied to continue to be an accessory use to residential uses, like all STRPs are now in the code. And then, STRP not owner occupied would be a commercial use that is permitted with conditions in zoning districts where multifamily or non-residential uses, specifically hotels, are permitted. So, that does not include the agricultural districts, AG or AR2A, or the one and two family districts, R, RA, RS, and RSA. But it would allow permits that were issued under the previous regulations to be renewed until 2019. So, this map shows the various zoning districts. The white is where STRPs are currently not permitted, but the purple shows AG, AR2A, R, RA, RS, and RSA. So, those are the areas where non-owner occupied, the new use, would not be permitted under 608. However, it does allow not owner occupied permits in the green areas, as well as the yellow areas. So, you can see downtown, midtown, and then pockets and corridors have zoning that would allow not owner occupied STRPs. 609 was a 12-month moratorium that was requested to be withdrawn. 610 was a 36-month moratorium on type 2 and type 3 permits that was requested to be withdrawn. 611 requires a statement that the applicant has notified any homeowners association or community association, but it also requires the applicant to tell the codes department if there is opposition from the HOA or condo association when they apply for their STRP permit. 653 adds two additional forms of identification to the list of documents that are acceptable to owner occupation. So, right now, the code includes a number of things that I can go back over, but this would add two additional items to that list of documents. And 685 has a variety of standards in it. The first is that it allows an online marketplace operator, which is not the STRP, but the platform itself, to submit aggregate data to Metro. It allows Metro to request that operators with violations or operators without permits be removed from an online marketplace. It has a section allowing the city to issue an administrative subpoena for information on specific properties. It does reduce the occupancy to more than twice the number of sleeping rooms plus four, or 10 persons, whichever is lower. So, there's a little bit of a reduction in occupancy there. And as well, it reduces the census tract limitations outside of the UZO from 3% to 2.5%, but leaves the UZO census tract limitations for not owner occupied to 3%. And this map shows the percentage capacity, I suppose. So, all of the blue areas have the most permits remaining of their 3%. So, they're between 0 and 0.5%. And you can see here, the purple line is the UZO, which shows that most of the STRP non-owner occupied use is occurring within the UZO. So, we wanted to just give a brief overview, and I'll be happy to answer questions about what these ordinances do, but you will see a staff report tomorrow with detailed recommendations, and then, of course, a public hearing and debate next week.
Can you explain us the process? Like, are we going to, are we going to hear each of these? I know we have to vote on everything separately, but how are we going to, there will be one staff report that will go through all of it in one public hearing?
Okay.
That's been very intentional.
Yeah.
And we've worked with council, and they've been gracious enough, the sponsors of the legislation have been gracious enough to defer them so that we were able to get them all on the same agenda here. So, I very much appreciate that.
But we'll debate each, we'll debate each, I mean, we will ultimately debate each item separately, to the extent there are separate issues.
Yeah, but the issues are also intertwined. So, the debate, the conversation lends itself to talking about all six of them at the same time.
Okay.
But there will have to be separate motions on all six.
Okay.
So, I'm not trying to, one of my goals is that, I realize that everyone's not always going to agree with us, but that we not surprise anybody with what we do. And so, I'll tell you all that we'll make recommendation for some fairly major amendments to the legislations being introduced, to try and achieve a balance that we think is appropriate. So, to answer your question, you'll have to vote on each one of the items, but I believe that the amendments that we're working on right now will get, will give you the opportunity to hopefully strike that balance with the legislation, so.
Commissioner, say?
What's the status of the state bill? I understand it's moved all the way to finance now?
I'll tell you what, I believe that the status of, there were a couple of state bills. One of them, I believe, never made out of committee and is still there. And then, the other bill that was moved forward by the, I think it was really industry-sponsored bill. In the end, the amendment made the bill, and the amendment simply stated that, I'm simplifying this, Margaret Darby in the legal department would probably smack me upside the head for saying it this way, but it allows local governments the opportunity to either allow the industry to, so one of the platforms to collect the taxes and remit them all at once, or for them to be collected from the individual property owners, the operators, I guess, better way to say that, and that that option is up to the local government. And I was, we were talking to Margaret this morning over these issues, and I'm not sure that I fully understand. Is that, that we have to collect them through the operators or the platforms unless we opt out, or do we opt in to allowing it, and we're still working through that element? But it was, they said, all the zoning pieces went away. All the zoning restrictions for local governments went away, and it really just was reduced down to how the taxes are collected.
So, we won't be prohibited from?
Correct. They did not take away the local zoning authority on this issue.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for the preview of the fun to come next week. All right, there are other items here, but.
All those are there by mistake.
Okay, well, then, good. I will declare the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Four hours shorter than last time.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.